All right, let's get started. Who wants to make a motion to start the meeting?
If you just declare it open.
I'm declaring it. Thank you. The, we don't have any adjustments to the agenda, although Darryl did submit a gentleman who might present today and that we just couldn't get that set up for today. So we're gonna try to do that at the next meeting.
Okay, good.
Attainable housing.
Yeah, Steve Leback, yeah.
Yeah, we'll try to line it up for your next meeting.
I'd like to review the and approve the minutes. I sent those out yesterday. Laura, I can't hear you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
And I will second, since you and I were the ones here. All right, wayfinding signs, there's no new updates, so we'll just move right to the TIP project update. So we had the public hearing. And did anybody show?
Yeah, we had a few people, I think, in the room. The public hearing took place. Some questions were asked, some questions were answered. One of the biggest things that came up was a question about should town meeting be able to chime in on the individual projects after the development plan is in place? And the board took that comment. They went ahead and adopted the development plan from their table, which effectively will send it forward to town meeting in March. As a matter of procedure, they will vote Monday, this coming Monday, to adopt Warren article language and to schedule a town meeting. So the town meeting hasn't actually been scheduled yet, but they have adopted the development program. And they took feedback from the public. So they did have that, that did take place. Anything else you want to add on that, Darryl?
We just adjusted some of the language from the previous meetings to reflect comprehensive plan and, you know, all of those things. And I think you hit the nail on the head in the, they're full speed ahead to get it, you know, to the March 9th special meeting. The Warren article has been drafted by our attorney, Alyssa Tibbetts. Joe, you've seen the copy of that. And, and some of the, I thought some of the feedback was good at the meeting and so the town could set local policy, have you will, not have to go back to the state all the time to say, may I? When we look at that, and it's no different than setting a facade program policy or other compartments of the TIP. So I thought, I thought it was okay overall.
All right, so the, I did have a conversation and maybe Shelley can fill in on, I don't know if anybody else, with a local person who thought it might have a hard time passing. The reason why was lack of understanding, because, you know, not a lot of people have been involved or, you know, I don't know. Wouldn't, you say a lot, some people were at the public hearing. I'm assuming it was less than 10 still, though.
Yeah, I would say it was. It was not a big turnout.
So now we're gonna go to a vote and we might not have a big turnout there either. But it's gonna make it really even more important to put in articles and positive information into the local communication methods to get people to understand what we're talking about, so that they're not, you know, going, oh, what's this? We don't want to do.
Do you, do you think, and I've heard some feedback on that too recently. Do you, one of the things that's come across my windshield, and I know this is not new technology by any means, but it's something I actually want to talk to the board about on Monday. Do you think it would be helpful if we were a little more proactive with Facebook or social media? In terms of maybe generating a town, a town office webpage where it's official information that's broadcast only?
Yes.
You know, saying, okay, here's, here's, because not everybody goes to the webpage. And there's a ton of stuff on the webpage. If you don't really know where you're looking, sometimes you can't, you may miss it or, so. With Facebook, it's a little more pinpointed. So it's one of the things we've been talking about here in the office and I've actually got a place on the agenda for it for next week.
Oh, good.
Can you make it shareable?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we would make it shareable. One of the things that I'm concerned about in my own experience is
Negative stuff.
The comments. So I think you can turn the comments off. And it's not that we don't want to hear.
No, I wouldn't think the town should have the comments, but then if it were like forwarded on, like if I forwarded it to my own page and then people, I could make, I mean, it would still generate negative, I think. You know, as well as positive.
Right. Want the negative to offset the negative.
Yeah.
To put the positives.
So I guess, you know, we'd be careful about the sharing part, although if you put it, make it shareable, then people, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that I actually.
One of the things to talk to is Chris Farmer, because I think he, doesn't he do the?
Rangely political forum?
But he takes, anything that's politics, he goes, he'll just remove it.
Yeah.
Right.
Offensive.
Yeah.
Offensive or?
Out of context.
The dynamics are a little bit different because we're a government agency. We can't delete things. We can remove them from sight, but we have to archive that.
No, but I think.
That's where it becomes complicated.
Yeah, but if you make it so no comments are allowed, but shareable.
Right.
And then we get Chris on board.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if Chris was one of the members who showed up for the public hearing. I don't know if he's.
No, I don't believe he was there, no.
So maybe he spent some time with Chris, you know, so he's aware of what's going on. And then if it's posted in Rangely political forum, which is probably the most appropriate place for it.
Yeah.
And I don't even know how many people are in that group, but there's kind of a few, I think.
I think so.
You know, he would be able to have a better understanding.
So that's kind of one of the things that's been, you know, circling around here that I've talked about.
I totally agree, because if I, if I wasn't doing this, I would never know that a lot of these things are happening.
And one other thing.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
One other thing for your discussion on Monday, I also think it would be helpful if you posted the agenda on what's going on in Rangely for the board meetings. I think you might get more people and the Zoom link. Because that's, I find with the restaurant that if I post something on that, it, everyone in Rangely knows. And so I think that if we posted, you know, there's a Monday meeting and here's the agenda and here's the Zoom link, you might get more attendance.
Good point. I was gonna say for some other follow-up, we can do what they used to do so many shopping days till Christmas. We can do little press blurbs and, you know, do two or three articles with our media as well. And then just do some updated, did you know, and just, you know, show all those positive things. Almost like little teasers leading up to the March 9th meeting.
Well, I think at our last selectmen meeting, Cindy had mentioned that she wanted like a, one of the questions and answers for our document. You know what I mean? Yeah, but it's simple as things. And Mark suggested the same thing. And I think now that Mark is actually representing the town and putting things in the highlight there, that that also could be a spin on it as well, but.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and I like that, Shelley, FAQ kind of thing, and we'll develop that. Probably launch it maybe over the holidays or certainly.
They, they can't be political, they can't be, they can't, they have to be like fact. They can't be like fabrication, or they can't, she has to rid them out. Okay, so, yeah, no, she, because there's some times, I think, when people, well, I tried to put this in the thumbs up, she rejected it. Because it was, it was a thumbs up but a slam at the same time to somebody.
Oh, oh, gosh.
Well, I think, yeah, especially if Mark's writing articles, we should probably get a heads up on Mark's brain on this all, too. He's been attending to all the meetings, so.
Yeah.
That would be helpful, I think, to know.
Well, he said at the meeting multiple times, he's completely for it, doesn't want to slow it down. He just had those concern, the concern you raised. But he said, I'm for it. I want you to know I'm for it.
Yeah, I think that came across pretty well. Yep.
Even when he was questioning stuff about like, for example, the airport and stuff, it's like, these are questions that other people have too. So why not, we need this. We need, we need these questions. We need this, not negative, but concerns. So we can try to nip them in the bud. So Darryl, maybe you can start putting together that, those snippets that you were talking about. What is, you know, nice and easy couple lines, you know?
Yes.
And then we maybe will review, I don't know how you want to, you guys can review them and put them out.
Maybe go through Joe and the clearinghouse, if that's okay, Joe?
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense. And that's something we really need to do, because if the board does vote on Monday, move this forward to town meeting, approve Warren article language and so forth. Then we have to work backwards from March. Obviously, we have the legal steps. We have the public hearing. We have the posting and notice and all that stuff for the actual town meeting. But we want to infuse or incorporate information along the way, so people know what it is. And that is probably the biggest takeaway I took from the public area of the conversation since, or how do we make sure people know what this is? Because it's, in order to figure it out in 10 minutes, I don't know if they'll be able to, I couldn't, you know, back way. It took me a lot of time to get my head on it, so.
And one of the things we could do from a historical perspective with the little bulleted items, which is our comprehensive plan recommended this, that then we did the downtown plan that recommended this, and then now here's where we are. And then just put, you know, more FAQ information on, on the TIP, so it's easy to read and understand.
This is where we, what we're paying to get to.
Right.
Yeah, I think that for some that may not be aware of that, that at least gives them.
To add that part, to be able to get more grant money and future funding. And, and so we're following all these steps in order to be able to qualify for more projects in the future.
Well said. And that's where people will have a comfortability level at least that, okay, yes, we invested in this comprehensive plan. Then we did the downtown plan that we didn't, you know, and here's the benefit by doing this. And I think that's probably where I'll look at starting the very first snippets, if that's okay.
Money not going to waste.
Yeah. That's the, that's the bumper stickers.
We're wasting our money with a comprehensive plan, we didn't do anything with it. Well, we're, we're forward. The next step, now, this is the next step, so.
Yep. So if that's okay, I'll start from that, that approach, and then we'll keep building on that as we lead into the big meeting in March.
Any more questions on TIP?
Election of author. Laura and I have been elected. So we need a secretary, so I'm not, uh, doing both. I'm not looking at you, because I think Don has already said no.
Don has already said no?
Yeah. So I elect Shelley as secretary.
All right, so you're gonna take votes from here up.
I think I go to the rest of this meeting.
Okay.
Laura, will you second? Did she hear?
Yeah, I second. You can't hear me?
Yep, now we can.
So I just have one question. That won't affect anything of any decision or vote that I do. Okay. I just want to make sure.
No, you're, you're allowed to be on a committee by virtue of the bylaws that have been passed. You know, other than your typical code of ethics, they, that, which I don't think you do.
So if I basically, to answer that out loud, because I have talked with Beth, so if, if we're voting on something to bring that to the board, should I abstain? So my, I can vote for the board, on the board level?
I don't, I don't see any conflict in that. I mean, if you have a personal conflict of interest, you can stay across the board.
Because it's not as if our committee has like money and stuff like that that we have to deal with, or big projects that we have to deal with.
We're recommending.
On the sidelines, but the project, okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and you know, the feeling I got when this came up in the elections, they were okay with it. They wanted that interaction to have things come to them. I think you're okay.
All right, good. Okay, great.
The CCI proposal, so. We, oh, all in favor. I'm sorry. Can I vote for myself or is that a? You cannot vote again, so. This is being recorded now. So I nominated Laura seconded, all in favor. Okay. Sorry. That's okay. Um, the CCI proposal, we had the presentation from Consolidated. We had two or three plantations there, not the third. You scheduled a December 30th date to have a, an all, on here conversation about it. Laura and I sat down with Joe just to kind of go through some of the follow-ups after that presentation to the selectmen. And I did have it to do, which I can get to in a second, but we had a few things that we were trying to make sure happened, so that we're prepared for the 30th. And on the 30th, I don't want to have meeting after meeting, you know, I think we should be as well organized as possible. So there were some follow-ups that were happening. I know Joe was followed up by making sure, did you get a hold of Sandy River?
So I did, I did talk to all three assessors independently. I started out by sending an email to all the plantations, letting them know about the 30th workshop that the board had scheduled. Dallas plantation has responded in the affirmative, they will be there. I know Laura works at Rangely Plantation pretty closely. Sandy River did not respond, so I called the town office. And ended up getting the individual phone numbers of the assessors. Called the first assessor at the beginning of the week, this week. He's aware of the meeting, not sure if he'll be there or not, but I did speak to the other two assessors yesterday. And my feeling from those two individually was that they intend to be there on the 30th at 5:00 via Zoom. And I made sure they understood if they can't use the actual computer, that there's a phone number, they can call him and interact that way by telephone. So pretty sure they're gonna be there on the 30th at 5:00. So, and I did, in those phone conversations, I did take the time and get the chance to explain to each of them, you know, what the proposal is in broad strokes. And I think the majority of them recognized that it is a need for the region to have high-speed internet. The recurring theme was, you know, it's already here on Route 4. And I said, that's, that's correct. I believe it is, because it comes to this building. But it's not available to all the side roads and the side streets that buildup needs to take place. And that's really what we're talking about. So I did get the opportunity to kind of have that one-on-one conversation with all three of them. So I know they're aware and know that they know what the project purpose is.
Yeah, so really, right now, it's limited, slow, and some capabilities of high speed now. Over copper, which is old technology that's been here for 60 years or something, right?
Right.
Going to a fiber option, which will allow you to go, everybody, not just one person. Everybody who wants it would have the access to high-speed internet. Yeah.
Right. And I did, enough to cut you off, and I did have a follow-up conversation yesterday with Charlie. We talked about those things. So Charlie Woodward is also, has also been invited to the meeting. But he does know that it's a conversation between the select board and the plantations to kind of, you know, figure out.
Okay, so I have a question, because I took it as that, and I know, because I've talked to Cindy about it as well. We're understanding it as like, basically, it looks like the town of Rangely would be the major person that does the loan. And then Consolidated is going to pay for the payments.
Yes.
So technically, I mean, it's nice to have the plantations on board, if it has to get us the grant money. But if it's gonna save us $2 million if one plantation steps out, I mean, I know that. And then they can also apply for grant money, because didn't we sign, I thought, one of the elections that we did, there was a bond on there about we voted for a bond for broadband. And then, so there was money available? Did we do that?
15 million at the state.
What's up?
State of Maine, 15 million.
Yes, so what's our chunk out of that? Do we get any of that?
I'm trying to figure that out right now. I left Peggy Schaefer at Connect Me a message and also Heather Johnson at DECT. So I'm trying to figure that out. And I'm also looking at what they've done in New Hampshire as well, to see if there's some spillover that we could have for our project.
The only question we had about that, we, I think it would be much easier if we could just negotiate with Rangely, do the bond in Rangely, but haven't go to all the plantations. Is there any technical issue municipality-wise that we're implementing a solution not in our district?
You know, because that, that, we ran into that problem with donating to in our donations. Because one of the donations was for the Cross Country Ski, because that's in Sandy River Plantation. And we weren't able to do that one, but there, I think there was another one that we weren't able to do, because it wasn't technically in our area.
Now, the telephone calls are not owned by the towns, right?
That's correct.
So, and that's where it's being implemented on.
Right.
So I don't think it's a problem. Right?
Right.
And then the, the end user, the end user does not have to go to the solution if they don't want to.
Right.
Right? So the only thing would be that they would be aware of the fact that they would be a surcharge of $10 and we're just trying to work on that.
Right.
You know.
Right.
To the end.
Because if you have, there are people, then maybe it's not gonna be, yeah.
I thought, I thought I heard in that, in that conversation the other night, that it would be more difficult for Consolidated to follow through with this, if there were less, any population less than the three plantations in the town of Rangely. I think it's gonna be a tough one for them, if it's, if it's a smaller amount. They really want.
No, one big thing, because if you're doing individual loans for everybody, then you're gonna be in trouble.
Right.
Yeah.
And I really don't think that it's gonna be, I know it's not gonna be an issue with Rangely Plantation or Dallas. So I, I don't, I kind of think it's a moot point. I think if we all, the three of us go, it's a lot, a big, different story. And I would think that Sandy River with Saddleback's pressure is gonna go too.
Good point.
And then, well, you also have Saddleback too.
Yep.
Right.
So your meeting on the 30th is gonna be led by whom?
The select board of Rangely.
Okay.
They're hosting it.
And you're just gonna open up the conversation?
We're gonna, are we gonna have Consolidated be a part of representing?
They're welcome to come, but my, I, I think the intent that I gathered the other night was that the board just wants to know if the other three communities are interested in pursuing this. And if they are, then.
Then we're gonna push it.
Then, then we'll work, work out, you know, the fine points, the minutia, the details. One of the other questions I've asked, because I don't know the answer to this, I asked it yesterday by email. After I talked to the assessors in Sandy River, I thought of this question. And which came up the other day, was when, when are their town meetings respectively? And I'm waiting for that information back. I don't know if it's in March, I don't know if it's in June.
Sandy, Rangely Plantation is in March.
Yeah.
And everybody else is right around the same date as ours.
Okay.
So that's when those all are.
So that's another piece of the puzzle, you know, in terms of authorization. And then, you know, I, I think number one is to see who, who the players are at the table. I think you'll be able to figure that out on December 30th.
Yeah.
And then you'll know how we're moving forward, if it's an interlocal agreement. One of the questions Charlie asked me yesterday was, do we generate or create a utility district? And I said, I don't know if we need to be that involved. Maybe we can just do it by interlocal agreement. But those are questions that really need to be flushed out. And I think we need, the first thing we need to know is, who's going to be at the table? Who wants to be involved in this? And then we can go forward from there. Darryl, does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense. And I think those are the two big items, is to flesh out an interlocal agreement approach or consider a utility district, certainly, and just see what's the best way to go with that. I, I think interlocal agreement is easier and less cumbersome, but I know there have been utility districts for broadband. And some have co-opted with an electrical utilities district, for example. So there might be something that could be done there. So be interesting to see.
Have we contacted Consolidated? We kind of abruptly ended, because we went right from that to the selectmen's meeting. So is Consolidated aware that we're interested enough that we're moving the ball forward?
I haven't contacted them.
My understanding is that Charlie has contacted them. I talked to him and he was gonna be doing that.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding too, is that Charlie is kind of the, the medium.
Okay.
Can I make a recommendation, suggestion, or request that we have some action plan brought up? That we bring some action plan to the meeting, assuming that everyone is gonna say yes? So in other words, I don't want to go to the meeting and like, oh yeah, we all agree, and then spend an hour coming up with an action plan. I would rather go to the meeting with an action plan in our back pocket and said, okay, you guys have decided this. Even if the action plan is, okay, the next step is to determine whether we're a utility or a locum.
Yeah, I think, I think that probably is the next question, regardless of who, who decides they're in or not. Hopefully, everyone says yes. And I think the next question is, how do we frame this? Whether it's in a local agreement or a utility district, the both, I mean, that's kind of a legal question. And then, there's a timeline. And I think number two is a timeline, that's kind of where I was going mentally with wanting to know where other folks were with their town meetings. So there's gotta be a timeline, and then there's got to be, the timeline is intertwined with, with whether it's an interlocal agreement simply or a utility district, because there are different authorization mechanisms there.
My, my only question on the voting and the other ones is, if it's going through Rangely, going to get the bond, do we actually need the plantations to vote on it? Because they're not voting for anything financially. It's more of a, you know, of.
It's an agreement.
An agreement.
I think that there has to be some skin in the game on the, because it, you know, in 20 years, we technically are gonna own this, right? And if it's all on Rangely's shoulders and X percent of the mileage is in Rangely Plantation, that's probably not. That's probably not where you wanna be, right?
Well, the, the financial benefit to Rangeli would be that all the money that you put together with the new lease to a service provider twenty years from now would go to Rangeli.
Right.
The other financial thing, and I'll talk to you about that now, is that I did talk to one of the representatives. And they said in their town, they were paid, they re- paid the bond, like, let's say the bond was two thousand. I'm, I'm just gonna say the number, two thousand dollars. But the bond over twenty years, at the end of it, you would be only paying a thousand, right? So they agreed to get two thousand from Consolidated for the twenty years, every month. That's how they did it. So at the end, there's actually money coming in. You know, and they, they thought it was gonna be probably a hundred, maybe a hundred grand or something like that. That the town, their town, will be getting as an additional revenue stream from this. So if Rangeli's taking the risk, right, by doing a bond, then Rangeli's gonna get the money. So that's just something to think about.
And also the timing of things, getting approval at our annual meeting in June. And then for the next allocation of the bond resources, that's early fall, late summer, or thereabouts. So the timing seems to line up okay.
Well, to be honest and like all fairness. The town of Rangeli did deed the school over without any compensation to all. Except for the plantations, if we're gonna go into technical stuff. When we did the school, there was no funds transferred, but yet now everybody owns the youth of the school. So is that the type of thing that we do in this situation as well? Like when they set up the RSU, are we gonna have to set up like a RSU with the plantations for the Fairpoint? I mean, for the consolidated communication? And have that type of thing where basically you have certain people that have from the assessors and stuff that have a vote on the whole project? I mean, is that how we should be looking at it?
Probably need some le- legal opinion on this, I would guess.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking through this, and my understanding from what Brian Lipold and Charlie have said is that everyone does pu- put together some sort of consortium to do this.
Right.
Whether, you know, which is kind of what I think you're describing as the RSU, it's a consortium. And you need to have players from each of the plantations on that.
Right.
Well, I thought, if you want, I can go through what the gentleman I talked to said.
Yep.
It was actually, I had like an hour, he whispered. So they, they're very similar to us, they're about, I think he said seventeen hundred people in their town. And I talked to John from Westmoreland, New Hampshire. And he's a, he's a tech guy, so he was on their broadband committee type thing. And they were going, they decided a few years ago that they had to do something for their community because they had, you know, the same situation, either zero or none or horrible. And they, basically, from their opinion, they thought that the absolute worst-case scenario would be if Consolidated was involved in this solution in any case, man or a horn, because they had such bad customer service routes. You know, for them. So they went out to bid to lots of different companies, and Consolidated came back originally with a plan that was just like getting them up to twenty-five-three, you know, with a proper DSL plan. It was expensive, and they knew about Chesterfield, which was the first implementation. And they said, we want that deal, right? So Consolidated at first said no, and then came back to them with the same exact deal that they presented us. Everything he talked about was exactly what he was talking about. And he said, he cannot tell you how fabulous Consolidated has been. And then they have totally wiped out any concerns that they ever had, and they did go with Consolidated's plan over everybody else's. And it's not costing them money, it's gonna add money, and they felt that the only worry was bankruptcy or their twenty years owning the network, and they thought that this was so limited compared to having none. And being stuck with sixty-year-old copper and never getting updates, or waiting for some, you know, future technology that's never come and get us, right? So they, they said that this was totally. The, the reason why Consolidated can do it this way through, through a bond, is they hold, they have that money on their books as a maintenance number versus an asset. So they don't have to show on their books all of this asset, you know? And therefore, they can afford to do it.
Right.
Which is why they're, they do the split agreement, and it wasn't quite as much as the cost that we have talked about, but they have a smaller footprint, you know, where we're much worse than now. So they agreed in March. They got their, they got their bonds in July. They started work on September first. They have all the fiber up now, and they're gonna be implementing customers now, in the next couple of weeks. So that's the process, and he said, Rob Custer, and I think Rob was the one who was doing the most. But I was off to the point, I didn't hear the names very well about the consolidated people.
I think he did mostly.
Yeah.
He said they worked with him, and what they told him is they were gonna be as frank as they could possibly be with them because their community needed Consolidated so much. I said, well, so does ours, you know, I mean, right? They have been totally owning those issues and, and working with them on every concern and being extremely straightforward. They did have a town meeting with them, Consolidated coming, and they had a hundred. They were a hundred and fifty-six to six with their vote, for, to go forward with it. So, um, they couldn't be happier, I guess, with what's going on. Instead of professionalism, commitment, all that stuff, it just kept going on. But all the first solutions were, were either you owned it, or it was cost too much, or, you know, you had to wait and get money from federally funded grants. None of those were gonna get them where they wanted to get. So that's, and he said he'd be more than happy to answer any question. He is, and he said we could talk to their town. I thought it might be a good idea, the town manager who works for that town, it's not listed here. But maybe for you to reach out to him and talk about the, they're one town, so they have a little bit different scenario, but maybe some of the technical aspects of how you have to work. Any questions?
Excellent, excellent information, and do you have copies? I would love to see the Chesterfield summary or the contract template or any of that info that CCI said they could provide.
Yeah, he said they had seven hundred and thirty-four addresses, seventeen hundred people. And, you know, the ten dollar, everything is much cheaper than what they, I talked about the concern about the price, you know?
Right.
Um, jumping, and he said, well, because Consolidated did say they have to give fair market price. So whatever's happening in Portland, they can't charge more for Rangeli than they would for Portland or any of their other regions. And he said that's what they signed up and agreed to as well. But, so it would be at least fair market price, whether it goes up or not over the years, is anybody's guess on that one. But, um, that was a concern. And the ten dollars a person, he said nobody had a problem with in their community. I mean, because you could not, you could opt not to do it, right? You could also say, I don't, I'm fine with what I got. They did not go to get grants, though, they just went, not that I know of.
Great, Kate, thank you for doing that.
So that's just one, Chesterfield was the other one, and they were the first one. Chesterfield, at the end of the day, does not own, they don't own the network. Fairpoint did it originally with them owning the network, that's why they switched to this model, but they wouldn't do it. So he thought that eighteen months was more from start to finish, like start from like the presentation to finish.
Yeah.
Versus, you know, it's been about six months, well, it's not even six months, it's been about three months that they did laying fiber. So the actual installation is a lot quicker.
That's what they, that's what Consolidated told us, that they said, once you got the bond, it would only take us three months.
Yeah, right. Yeah, but it all depends on what the demand is, because if everyone's doing it all at the same time.
That's what I said.
Right.
They did say, though, like, while they're laying this out, they're already laying fiber to people's homes too. So they were saying, like, on some people that they already knew were, they were trying to get all the preliminary stuff.
Right.
Done. And he did talk about copper going away, and the reason why their DSL is so bad is because their copper's so bad. Because it's so old and it's been broken so many times, it's placed together, blah, blah, blah. I would assume that's the same with us, and they said every time it rains, you know, you get a crackle in the phone or you hear. I laughed because they sounded just like us, to be honest. All right. I don't think there's any way to move this thing faster, though, huh? Is that what we're all kind of in agreement, like putting on a special meeting in March, like in that special town meeting in March? To have a vote?
No, I, March is, yeah, I think, I think we're already past, well.
The tip is gonna be March.
Yeah, I, I think it would be.
Now we're in abundance now.
Yeah, I think June is probably the earliest that the county could really, and that honestly is, is, I don't wanna say accelerating, but we're gonna have to hustle, which the board knows, which they are hustling. That's why the meeting's December thirtieth, to actually get on to June. Or, because there'll have to be at least one. And they'll, will wanna have informational sessions and so forth, in addition to public hearing, sure. Especially if we're involved in, you know, the units of joint capacity. I'm really interested to see what the conversation brings. Who wants to be in the, in the project? So in terms of action plan, that's, those are the two steps I have. Number one is determine who wants to be involved. And then number two is a timeline.
Maybe have one person from each to be a part, like, the contact person, pick up the information out. So basically, when he got our meeting, if there's information for our meeting, that person is notified. Anyone else could do it as well, but they decided it's coming up in regards to. Just so they're keeping their, all their assessors informed and having that contact.
The other thing that would be one of the, they had Consolidated, that's the community, you know, what we, we did it in a footprint meeting, right, that's what it, but to do something like that, and then we're talking maybe March or April for that. We might be able to have it in the school, but I don't know, is that possible? But, um, that, that would be good. You know, and I would have that, the one who presented, I thought he was very straightforward and
Yeah.
clean about that whole bit, you know? Present.
So Shelley, are you saying, are you suggesting there be like a committee almost of the four?
Absolutely, yeah.
So one person, like, itself, and one of the assessors from each plantation, it would be the action committee on this. That would kind of move things along outside of the meetings.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking that, like, again, being a part of those meetings with us, like, say, this is coming up at our meeting. We have this representative coming, please zoom in, you know what I mean? So one person from each plantation takes the initiative to be a part. I mean, we have our group here, and then we have Laura that's also a part of Rangeli Plantation. But it's nicer to get an assessor on there as well, because Laura and people go to all their meetings. It's like that person would be the one representing broadband for their communities. If I have a one plan of action person, then it's probably a lot easier to get that communication going with all of us.
Well, Brian, Brian Lipold and Charlie have asked us to put together this broadband.
Right.
And the truth with Laura and I were struggling, well, hoping out into, but we're struggling to get people and to figure out. Because neither Laura, I mean, I'm not a expert on broadband, you know?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But maybe like a, you know, like somebody who has some media background and danger background.
Right.
You know, on there as well, and that would, right.
Right.
So maybe one of the action items for the thirtieth is, number one, determine who is interested in participating as we move forward. And then maybe one A, or number two is, pick a delegate from each community to be the point person or contact person for broadband, so they're responsible for kind of keeping in touch.
So you're not calling every assessor, that's kind of crazy, that's really not the job description, but yeah.
Right, yeah, you're right, it's not anything I can do every week for doing. That was kind of a one-time thing, sure, that you want us to come up.
We just didn't wanna have a meeting on the thirtieth and have them not show up.
Absolutely, I know, but here we are, like, they have more people from Consolidated than anybody else. That was disturbing, but then everyone complains about it, oh, we did not, okay. How, how do you want us to get ahold of you?
Yeah, it was discouraging in one, one aspect, because, you know, the patient said, I was wrong, Sean, but it was encouraging for me. And I think I told Daryl this, or maybe it was Charlie yesterday, that the, the resources, you know, Consolidated put into that meeting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They're taking it seriously.
Yeah.
Yeah, said something to me.
Right.
After organization, we're talking.
Yes.
And they're not at the bottom of the organization, those people are at the top.
So.
My, my only, the whole reason why I was talking about timing is, I wanna make sure Consolidated said they had a proposal up to more than one place, right? They said, I think they almost said nine.
Right.
So I don't wanna be the ninth.
Yeah.
You know, I would rather be, and we won't be the first, probably, but because we don't wanna be, my, my take on Consolidated, we've been doing it for five years now, right? Driving them, you know, we have to convince them to even implement anything, you know? Yeah, all that kind of stuff. So is, if you're not on them, you're going last, and we don't go first.
You must go first, or, yeah. But at the same time, it's like, so by the time the state gets their act together with grant money, we're gonna miss out on.
Fifty million isn't going very far, right? Okay, fifty million's not going to work, yeah, with Consolidated.
Right.
I'll tell you that right now, it's going to somewhere else that has zero.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe that's another question, I don't know how we would frame it for the thirtieth. Once we get these things kind of square, maybe question four is, or action item four is, determine if we're going to go forward regardless of any other grant, regardless of any other funding, are we gonna proceed with this with bond only?
Yeah.
Because the momentum is there, the bonding is there, do we proceed? Do we all agree that we're gonna bond it, and if Daryl and others come up with other things, we'll, we'll consider that as happens. But we're serious enough about this, that we're just gonna take the bond and run with it. So maybe that's question number four, and that may help with the timeline going forward. So, you know, if we realize we're not waiting for the grants, or we're taking the time to apply the grants, we're just worried about the bonding. Which is its own process. That kind of took, in me, it hit me, in my mind, it streamlined the process. We know the funding source, we know how to do that, we've done it before.
Right.
I think that's the plan, I mean, I would be voting for that one.
But I, I, we think that, we try to make sure that everybody else says, okay, yeah, that makes sense to us. Let's, let's roll with that, that approach, then we know the timeline.
The only other question I have on bonding is, is the town strapped to bonding? Like, I mean, we have so many bond halls here, that any bond would be an issue, even if you have a big one?
No, I think we'd be okay. But that is, you know, there is a, that's why there is a process, the bond, and so forth, that we have to go through. And we have to kind of figure out what that would look like. But it would be in our favor if the proposal, obviously, if it says, you know, your bond payment per month is to use your number two thousand. And Consolidated is assuring that they're going to give you two thousand dollars each month for twenty years.
Right.
If you're the bond manager, it's very low risk, you know?
Exactly.
I think it's, it is pretty easy to behold, so. Yeah, maybe that's one of the action questions or action items. What do you think, Laura? Do we wanna ask everybody in the room on, on the thirtieth, you know, do you, are they comfortable proceeding? Knowing that the funding structure is only bonding at this point, we're not worried about trying to apply for grants or anything like that?
I think that's a very valid question, yes. Yeah, and sorry, I got kicked off for a little while.
Joe, I think that's the best course of action, straightforward with the bond. And one of the good things is it's gravy if. Some funds come in from other sources and grants, then that can be factored in as offsets. And even our TIF, I was happy that CCI gave a shout out to our upcoming TIF, so the, some of these things can help with the debt service. As we get into it, but I think initially, the bond is to be on the end all to, to get this moving.
And the grants, I mean, we can go with things like people low income, you know, like we can afford. Because the, the, the biggest, I mean, we've had people who paid tons of money to get internet here, right? Who can afford it. Who are going to pay. And then we have the people who can't, you know, another monthly payment is going to kill them. So we could get the, you know, money to be like a, you know, how the town has the money for people who are down and, you know, need a little extra help. You could put an internet bucket where you could assess that instant value of income.
Certainly, our TIF allows that as well, and it's, you know, direct grants to the consumers. So you have the municipal side, certainly, you want to look at. The debt service, but then you could have that structured broadband, you know, funds to help the consumers. Yeah, spot on, Kate, yep.
Okay, so I'm, are we, with this then, we're all excited for the thirtieth and. And was there any other uh to do's that we need to do before the thirtieth?
Well, since I missed a little bit of it, did you, it sounds like you came up with some action questions or action items? Could, would you mind restating them?
So there are four, four items that we talked about. Number one is to determine who's interested in proceeding out of the four entities. Number two is a timeline for town meeting, uh meaning working back from June, which is great with town meeting. Uh number three, if you have one person from each plantation or town, be a point person for broadband. And then number four is the question about, does, do all the parties agree that are interested that bonding is the, is the. Most expeditions process moving forward, just to get this thing off the ground. So those are the four items that I've got written down. I think that's, those are four pretty good components that. Get something, extract something out of this meeting, I think.
I think that's great. I, um the only thing, question, you probably talked about it, but does a per, point person from each town slash plantation have to be an assessor or a select board? Or are we looking for towns person or both, or either?
I think we would prefer them to be an assessor or select.
I mean, there can be more than one if they're decides that they want to create a committee, but we're just thinking that with the assessors, if some, if there's one assessor that's there. They can always go back and represent and, and, you know, keep all the other assessors informed.
Okay.
But I agree, Laura, like if we do, like, you know, we were talking about that broadband committee at one point, getting more technically savvy type. Um you know, we might. That recommendation to the assessor to reach out, or maybe they, they sit in on our economic opportunity.
Maybe like maybe have a separate meeting that is only for broadband, that is a committee that is part of us.
Right. Yeah, and I'm not sure in Ranger's plantation, the assessors are the right answer, but. Nothing, nothing personal, but I don't, I don't think they would want to. I think they'd rather appoint someone, but that's, that might be just my personal opinion.
Well, it could be the assessor or their designee.
Right, that's what, exactly.
I think in your case, that, that probably would, would work just fine. It has been all along Ranger's plantation, I think it's probably. While we're recording, I don't think there's a lot of concern in.
Right.
But I think where Shelley was coming from, just to make sure that we have uh folks from, from the elected leadership of each town that know what's going on. So that, yeah, so they can report back, just so that.
So it's basically their responsibility to make sure that it gets there, even though someone else, you could be still filtering the information to them. It's still just a matter of someone taking the initiative to make sure that broadband is on their agenda every time.
Right.
Until we figure it out for the vote and all that other stuff, so.
I'd also like to go to Charlie and Brian Lippold and get a kind of detailed action plan from them as to what they see as the steps. Because I think they probably have one, and I'm happy to do that. I'll follow up with them on it.
Okay, so I'll put that as a number five on the action plan to review, on, on our action plan to review. Uh consolidated's action plan.
Yeah.
Uh just Charlie and Brian are both independent, right? So they, they represent from county. Broadband versus consolidated as a company.
But I think they'll, they'll probably get it from consolidated. They've kind of become our conduit to consolidated, so.
Rather than, you know, I heard five or six different people talking about it. Okay, so we have five items. I think that's, that's plenty to, you know, good meeting.
All right, next topic and last, anything, anything else? I don't know any, any updates on holiday before.
There are, I know, updates. I have mentioned, he's, he's aware that uh Don will be working on it.
Is that um, when did we get to pick on?
Well, I think, I think, no, it's a good, it's a, it's a really good question. I think the idea was to get some ideas put together, narrow it down, and then, and then make a proposal.
Yeah.
So once that's filtered out.
I mean, I know it's not the highest priority, but we don't want to keep kicking it down the line. I'm just trying to figure out if, um, if. I don't know how to go about this, you know, if. I can have it done, I guess.
So I think.
Where she's at.
I think we all agree, and there are, you know, I think the last time we talked about, we agreed, we're not going to really get anywhere with it during this point. Have some kind of proposal together for uh budget season. So I think that's where we can.
This is what, um, this is what uh Houston has done. I know, I'm sorry, that's not very good.
It's on a.
That say happy holidays?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I really liked the way that Belgrade's done there, the little tiny, those uh.
Love that team.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Thinking like that, it's an idea, the wind blows so much, they are killing those lights.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, like, especially in one section of town, where the wind comes up the lake, maybe assessing on where those.
I have a question on the, do, do you think that the flags will be ripped in the wind as well? Those banners, the banners themselves?
Well, I'm thinking that holds it better, because right now, the ones when you put the flags in there, the wind comes right up and they pop them right out of the thing. But if you're holding the flags, I mean, you know what I mean, if you're holding them together with the.
With the brackets, yeah.
Yeah, that might, I'm just thinking that it might keep them better.
And.
Or maybe they're going to rip it out. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what the answer is for that.
Well, usually with wind conditions, uh display sales, for example, that supplies a lot of banners and brackets, they have the fail coupling safe uh bracket arms. And then they can do slits in the banners so that it's not buffering the wind so mu, it's, it actually is buffering the wind more to keep them up.
But it's just funny, because it takes the offset of the pole, you know what I mean, all the poles with all.
Will you send that picture for Dawn?
Send that picture on?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to figure it out.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll send, I'll send Dawn an email too, and see where she's at, if she's needing assistance on that.
Um CMP streetlight proposal, I missed that part of the.
So the board did vote to authorize the assignment. Um so there'll be uh CMP or of course, over the next six or eight months. We'll swap out all of those streetlights at their cost, at CMP's cost, and it'll save the town roughly six and seven thousand dollars a year for fifteen years. And they are Dark Sky compliant, had a meeting with David Miller and Nancy Carlson from the Harris Trust. Uh and they did their research and checked on a spec sheet from CMP, and they checked out as compliant with Dark Sky. So Dark Sky has been. Uh kind of brought up in, in the board meeting, and gave us some, some material out there. That's one of the things that, uh they're, they're interested in. Uh promoting, in fact, it may even be uh evident in some of the new code work that we're, we're working on. Just to kind of really control and reduce light pollution.
We, we did have an updated uh conversation with our CDA uh yesterday, or the, where, I can't remember. Um where Dark Sky is, you know, obviously on that part where they funded us, CDA did to do Nancy and get some of this stuff done and just keep going. So uh we'll just keep, you know, it is like a two-year process or something like that, but. Anything else, Laura, on Dark Sky that you want to add?
No.
Okay. Um the next thing would be the budget in that. I think before we can do the budget, we need to know what we've got. So I don't know what we've got.
So I have, I didn't completely copy this, handwritten, but the reserve balances uh for economic. Uh economic development is thirty-two thousand two seventy-five is.
Okay.
Downtown is seventy-two thousand four seventy-six. Let's round it up. Uh it's a new dog. Um the amount carried forward for a street decoration was eight thousand five hundred ninety-five, so the total in decorations currently is eleven thousand ninety-five. Uh and the TIF consultant, there's uh eleven thousand five seventy in the tank, although I just signed a purchase order this morning. Uh for just under three grand, so that's now down around eight. So there's eight thousand left in that.
Is that eight thousand something we're going to use?
Yes.
Yeah. So.
Most of it. I assume we're going to use most of it.
Yeah, the good news with, with our legal person, Alyssa Tibbetts, she's done really, really well, because we had a cap of fifteen and mostly other consultants would have been twenty-five. So I think we've done well with utilizing her talents.
That's what I have for updates. Um. The scientists don't have the information.
How about parking? Parking in, down, what was parking in? We have fifty grand in parking.
Right.
And the area estimate was ten grand and implementation was forty, but we, we didn't do implementation. So it all probably was engineering kind of stuff.
Hey, I don't know if that was in economic or downtown. Do you remember which reserve that was in, or was that part of the original question?
That is part of the original question.
I'm gonna have to figure that out.
Yeah, my understanding is some of it was downtown and some of it was through public works, almost like a hybrid, but I never was sure of the actual numbers either on that, how they did it.
All right. Well, one of the things I'll look at as we get in the budget is, I'm going to make this crystal clear going forward. So somebody cutting in that doesn't have the background can look at and see what's where. So I'll work on that.
So, so it looks like our um downtown and our reserve have been utilized to pay things over the last few years. That were additional projects that we might not have known was going towards that, so I'm not. Because if I had fifty in parking and twenty in economic development from last year, that's seventy thousand. So I'm missing some, we're missing a chunk of money. Right. What's your recommendation here for us? So if you, maybe you could send us an email, and then on the next meeting, we can come up with what we. Because I thought we had about fifty grands still, or twenty, uh at least forty, fifty in uh reserve that hadn't been touched for any reason. I assume the fifty for parking was almost gone because of um all the work with the downtown crosswalks and everything like that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'll work on that, get you an email. I would, I guess my suggestion is, if you have ideas um about what we want to accomplish in the next year. Just, just come in with those quotes and estimates on what they're going to cost, and, and then we'll worry about what we have here, so it's kind of a separate thing. I am also concerned about accountability, like I got it. I'm not, I'm not saying we don't want to do that, I'm saying if you don't let it cloud or, or change what it is you want to accomplish in the next year.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, the question is what we think we need to spend, spend money for, and we can figure out what we have to ask for after that.
Right. No, my only question on that would be, uh, you know, we were asking for, I think, almost twenty thousand a year. We've done it now for three years to build up that. Reserve account for grants. So that, just keep in mind, Laura, we'll probably need to ask for some. You know, I wasn't planning on doing it forever, asking that kind of money, you know, but. Okay, so next week, next time, we'll, we'll do that. Is there any other um business that anybody would like to discuss? Thank you. I'm making a, I'm not making a motion, I'm just calling it closed. The meeting. Oh, uh, thank you. January eleventh? Uh Laura? January eleventh?
Yeah, I was getting, I'm just getting my calendar.
Four.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. We're going to go with Merry Christmas and a relaxing New Year.